And there's one guest tonight, Seth.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The time is now 2:05 and the State Board of Education Special Meeting of August 4, 2020 is called to order due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Executive Director 2020-2 and Executive Order 2020-154, State Board of Education Special Meeting is being convened with remote access technology. Since a quorum of the board is not present and the meeting has been properly noticed and members of the public have the opportunity to join the meeting, we will follow the agenda for discussion purposes. There will be no deliberations or decisions made because a quorum is not present. This is in accordance with Attorney General Opinion 7235. At this time, Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Ms. Marilyn Snyder.
I'm happy to do that. Thank you. Dr. Cassandra Ulbrich is President of the Board from Dearborn. Ms. Michelle Fecto is Secretary of the Board from Detroit. Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. Ms. Nikki Snyder, SBE Legislative Committee Member from Dexter. And Ms. Brandy Johnson, the Governor's Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce Development, is joining us from the Governor's Office. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Board, we have one primary purpose for our gathering today, and that's to continue our work on the Strategic Education Plan update. As you know, we've been working on this for several months. We're working on it hard. Pre-pandemic took a couple of months hiatus from it in the early months of the pandemic, and now we're back to putting the finishing touches on our work. What you have before you today and what Sheila Alice, our Chief Deputy Superintendent, Kelly Siciliano Carter, Director of Strategic Planning and Implementation, will be sharing with you along with Kyle Garant, our Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, is a plan that is close to completion. It has the mission and vision from our current Strategic Education Plan, the one that you as a board approved in 2016. It has revised guiding principles which retain much the same spirit of the current guiding principles. It has redone goals consistent with our focus groups, consistent with 12,000 surveys, consistent with almost a dozen meetings of one sort or another with the State Board, and consistent with a number of reflections that have taken place off of those data. It has metrics. Our current plan does not. The proposed plan would have metrics, and we're going to spend the vast majority of our time today working on the metrics and getting your reflection on where we are with metrics and the extent to which you want to tweak or otherwise change those metrics. And then we'd like to share with you a reflection on the notion of local district contributions to a strategic plan once approved and put into place. So with that said, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Alice, Ms. Carter, and Mr. Garant. Gentle people, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Hello, board members. Mrs. Carter and Mr. Garant and I are very pleased to be able to continue our discussion with you today on our Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Our conversation today is going to focus on the two documents that Dr. Rice sent to you last week. One was a memo that describes the proposed five components of our revised Top 10 Plan, and the other was a four-page document that includes all five of these components. During the past four to five months, we have presented all of these proposed five components to you. Four of the five have had multiple presentations, so we're not going to spend much time on them. Our time today, as Dr. Rice indicated, will be primarily focused on the topic of metrics. So let's begin with a review of the five components that we are proposing for the Top 10 and 10 Plan. You're going to see these on the screen. Thank you, Mark. We'll begin with first component, which is a vision statement. As Dr. Rice mentioned, we are recommending that we maintain the vision statement that's in the current Top 10 and 10 Plan. And the same is said for the mission statement, that we continue to use a mission statement that is in the current Top 10 and 10 Plan. Our third component is guiding principles. The proposed six guiding principles that you see on the screen were shared with you previously. We created these six principles based on the input that we collected from interviews and the submitted surveys. These amended guiding principles maintain the spirit of the guiding principles in our current Top 10 and 10 Plan, which Dr. Rice mentioned. You'll notice that we made one minor change to the first guiding principle, and it is highlighted in yellow. We included the verbiage to close the student achievement and opportunity gaps that currently exist. That was added based on the conversation that took place during the June State Board of Education meeting among board members. The fourth component that you'll see on the screen are the eight goals. You heard me say multiple times that these eight goals emerged during previous interviews and were ranked as very important on survey results. You also heard Dr. Rice mention that in the introduction. These eight goals remain largely the same over the past six months, except for a couple of tweaks. The most recent tweak is the inclusion of the word "early" in the goal to improve early literacy achievement. That word was added, the word "early" was added so that it more closely aligns with our statewide efforts to improve literacy among our young learners. And then the next and the fifth component, which is the final component, is metrics. As I said, this is going to be our major topic today. When you think about the metrics for our eight goals, there are five of the goals for which the metrics that we are presenting today have not changed. There are three goals in which the metrics have been revised or have been provided because they were under construction the last time we presented to you. So our time today will be spent going through the metrics for the eight goals. And we're going to begin with the first goal, which is to expand early childhood learning opportunities. And I'm now going to turn the presentation to Mrs. Carter to go through the metric section with you. So Kelly?
Thank you, Mrs. Alice. I appreciate that. And hello, board members and Dr. Rice. I'm excited to be with you today and talk about the metrics. So Sheila just mentioned, we're going to put these into two buckets. So we're going to do the five goal areas that you have seen the metrics before. So I'm going to walk through those pretty quickly, and then we're going to pause and have discussion around those, and Dr. Rice will lead that discussion. And then we'll come back to the three other goal areas with metrics where Sheila just mentioned those were either amended, added, or expanded. So we're kicking this off. So the first goal is to expand early childhood learning opportunities, and the metrics that we're recommending are the number and percent of children served in Great Start Readiness Program, the number of children eligible for the Great Start Readiness Program, and then the NEAR, which is National Institute for Early Education Research from Rutgers University, the annual yearbook rating for state-funded PK programs. We would collect and report as available for all students and all groups of students, which include gender, race, ethnicity, students with disabilities, students without disabilities, English learners, and non-English learners. All right? So then I'd like to move, Mark, down to the goal of expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. Thank you. So the metrics we're recommending for this goal are under certain areas. So this first is the area of career and technical education. So the metrics we recommend are number and percent of students enrolled in CTE programs based on overall student population, number and percent of CTE completers based on students enrolled in CTE programs, number and percent of CTE students who received a high school diploma or credential. The next section is under advanced placement. So metrics being number and percent of students enrolled compared to the total population, and then the number and percent of tests taken and students earning credit from AP tests. The next section is under international baccalaureate, and we're recommending number of students enrolled and number of students earning credit from IB tests. Next, under early middle college, the number and percent of students enrolled in an EMC program, and then the number and percent of students who successfully obtained their high school diploma and/or earned at least one of the following EMC outcomes: 60 transferable college credits, associate's degree, professional certification, Michigan Early Middle College Association certificate, I believe that should be, or acceptance into a registered apprenticeship. And last is dual enrollment, where we recommend number of students enrolled and the average college credits earned during high school. Again, we would collect and report as available for all students and all groups of students. Next, I'd like to move to early, improving early literacy achievement goal. And this metric we recommend is related to student proficiency. And we would like to mention this, that we're trying to triangulate this data. So we're looking at three points on a national, local, and state level. So the MSTEP, which is state-level data, we're recommending third-grade ELA, and then we're going to national assessment, excuse me, the National Assessment of Educational Program Progress, sorry, and fourth-grade reading, that's national, and then local benchmarks for third-grade ELA. So again, we would collect and report as available for all students and all groups of students. The next would be to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. For that goal, we would recommend the metrics of the four, five, and six-year graduation rates. The next goal is to increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential, and we recommend the number of adults with a certificate or degree. So those are the five goal areas we've seen metrics for before, and I'd like to pass it back to Dr. Rice now for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Board members, any questions or comments, thoughts regarding the first, the metrics associated with the first five goals as just enumerated?
Ms. Michelle? I just had a couple of questions. So why was early literacy? I know that's not goals, but why was early literacy added to the, as opposed to just literacy generally? What was the reasoning?
So I think the feeling was that the field talks about getting young people off to a good start, four years old, five years old, six years old, seven years old, and that once you're off to that good start, you're sort of off to the races in education. And in the absence of that, you're really going to struggle through a good portion of your career. So it's just really leveraging the importance of early literacy. It's not to suggest that literacy doesn't continue as an important subject area in middle school and high school.
Right. So it's dovetail with the third-grade reading bill kind of, right?
It's to acknowledge, it's to acknowledge the role of early literacy and everything else that follows. I think the law does the same thing. I don't think it does it well. But I think its point is much the same, that if we can do better with respect to early literacy, we can do better with respect to education more broadly.
Okay. The other question I have is about expanding secondary learning opportunities, which I think is really great, except I don't really see a place for kids with, that might not be, you know, like my son Sam with autism. You know, he might, he's probably, it's highly unlikely that he would be able to take advantage of, you know, AP and, you know, even dual enrollment or advanced placement. Even the career and technical, there's issues because of them. So I'm just wondering if there could be a metrics, particularly for students who have some intellectual or cognitive concerns that schools could look at and say, well, this is what we should be doing for them.
Sure. One of the things that we want to do is we want to collect data on a wide range of young people in each of these programs so that we're not losing particular groups of children, but rather we're staying focused on trying to meet the needs of all young people. There was some conversation about tracking children or using data associated with young people in transition services programs, that is after high school, 18 to 26 years old. We think that there's a value associated with that. Each of these goal areas in their metrics has a wide range of data collection points, and you'll notice that they include but aren't limited to students with and without disabilities.
But this particular, the metric here won't capture kids that might be more severely, you know, have some cognitive issues. So I don't, I would like to see them have, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm looking at, there's, I don't see transition services sort of included. Maybe I missed it, but I didn't see them in any of the goals. And so I'm just, I'm not exactly sure how to phrase it, but it would be something that, you know, a local district could look at, and directors of special education could look at and say, oh, yeah, that's an attainable goal. That's something we should be focusing on for these kids. I just don't want to be left out of an opportunity.
Is it in, is it in high school or post-high school?
I would say the transition services are in high school. And then if they can get a job, if they can live on their own, if they can, you know, whatever, that would be post-high school. If they can go into some sort of a certificate program for, you know, I know that there was programs through, what, Merus or whatever, that they have programming there for job training. I wish there were more of those types of things for kids with, that have these kinds of issues, you know, to help them become more independent. If the schools actually provide meaningful vocational training, a lot of times it's not meaningful. It's well-intentioned, but it's, they don't go anywhere. So, yeah.
Let's work on the transition services metric. That is a metric that is already established. We feel like it's a pretty solid metric. I'm concerned, like you're concerned, about a make-work metric or a metric that tracks what one person might call meaningful, another person wouldn't. Most of these have pretty, are pretty defined in their terminology. Transition services similarly as well. So we'll add that. We'll reflect upon other possible metrics in high school that we can similarly add. And if you come up with another reflection, if you could share that with us, that would be, that would be helpful as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts or comments, questions?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder has a, I believe Ms. Snyder has a comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because my network connection is not 100%. So just back into the other direction of early literacy. So I know third-grade reading law is obviously very controversial. We talk about testing, that's controversial. But when we make goals and we make metrics like we're talking about, I mean, I think we all hope that that will translate to dollars that will go to kids or classrooms. So my thought process is, as we talk about adding that into the strategic plan, how do we envision that translating to kids and to classrooms? Because we talk a lot about classroom sizes. One of the things I hear frequently from teachers or people who have come to the board and presented is the concept of small group reading and early literacy coaching and getting kids everywhere access to more and more of that so that early literacy is an issue that we can keep addressing. So how will this strategic plan play out to local school districts and local control along those lines?
Sure. Later in the presentation, we're going to talk about a portion of the strategic plan entitled contributions. And rather than sharing with local school districts a laundry list of strategies that they may or may not use, that may or may not be appropriate to them as 831 local school districts across the state or LEAs across the state, what we want to do is we want to raise up best practices among local school districts. So local school districts will be able to provide links to what they're doing in each of these goal areas. So local school districts would be able to say, here's what we're doing on literacy. Here's what we're doing in early childhood. Here's what we're doing with respect to health, safety, and wellness. So it'll be an opportunity for local school districts to share with one another almost as if it were a state strategic plan bulletin board, best practices across the state. So that's one reflection. The other reflection is that we believe that what we hold up and what we talk about and what we raise to consciousness is going to get more attention. By extension, we would hope more resources as well. And we would hope that literacy would be first and foremost among them. I don't know anything that's more important than early literacy with respect to what we do. And then just one other thought with respect to small class sizes and particularly reading groups. Most of our elementary educators, whether they're blessed with small class sizes or larger class sizes, are working with young people when they can with small, with small group reading lessons. So for example, I might have 25 in my first-grade classroom, but at some point, I find sometime within that class carving out time to do that small group session with four or five of my young people at a pop. There needs to be more of that, and we need to make that more possible with lower class sizes at the early elementary level. But that already exists now and exists substantially across the state. So those are reflections in those three areas. Any follow-up or any additional questions?
Just following up on Nikki's, what she's saying. So we're looking, the metrics for this, we're looking at basically test scores to see how well the children are learning on literacy. Is that?
Right. So literacy is the, is the single one of the eight goal areas where there's a pretty substantial reliance on test results, on assessment results. The others have a mix of metrics. The other goal areas have a mix of metrics, but they don't tend to be as reliant on assessment. We didn't feel like there was any other way to address literacy without these assessments. We chose to present them to you in a triangulated way so that you would have a national assessment, a state assessment, and then a locally chosen assessment, the locally chosen benchmark assessments, which are typically used to help benefit instruction by individual classroom teachers. But yes, that metric is substantially assessment-based. The others, less so.
And I did have, I did have one other thing, sorry.
Okay, please.
I just keep harping on. In the expanded learning, I like that it distinguishes children with disabilities and without. But there are, I personally and know of other families who've had children that have behavior issues, like with autism, but not just autism, but where I was told I could not participate because my child, they couldn't be in that program. And because they just didn't know how to handle someone with autism. Is there, I'm just, is there a distinction between just besides with disabilities and without? Because it can be very mild disabilities. Would it be capture other classifications, even if it's like low frequency, high frequency, something like that that kind of gets at either, because getting at, are they truly including all children?
Right. So that's, that's, that's an important question. It's a really important consideration because you do have children who are steered toward or away from particular courses or particular types of study. And in many cases, that's repugnant and not at all supported by research about the capability of individual groups of young people. If we are able to more precisely cut up the data, we will. Recognizing that that really turns on how districts report the data. In some cases, we're able to do this easily. In other cases, less so. So for example, we're easily able to do it with MSTEP data. We're less easily able to do it currently with some of our data around, for example, dual enrollment. So to develop the capacity in the latter case, we would need the, we would have to really drumbeat with school districts around sharing of that data in a more granular way. With respect to advisement, though, if I could, our children should be encouraged to widely self-actualize and should not be discouraged or should not be encouraged to be discouraged from particular activities. This was a big issue with me for years around AP and economically disadvantaged children and children of color. And in two districts that I led, we boosted these numbers for children of color, for economically disadvantaged kids, far more than we did for white, middle-class children. But you have to be very, very, very precise and very intentional about your advisement with kids, with their parents, with their grandparents, with their guardians. Sheila Alice and I had some conversation about this pre-pandemic, and we're going to actually start a, we're going to push out in a particular direction around this with respect to socio-economically disadvantaged kids, children of color in AP courses. But this extends to, as you point out, children of, children with disabilities, English language learners, and a range of other children who are simply not always included as they should be in conversations about particular course offerings. So we will, we will cut up the data as finely as we are able to, recognizing that in some cases, we're able to do that quite well, in other cases, not so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McMillan, a question slash comment?
Yeah, I mean, and I apologize if this was in a prior email. But I mean, I kind of want to step back. So these two hours, we are not making decisions, like you mentioned, but we are giving input, and there's going to be a decision in August at the board meet, or next week, or in September, or where, what's the, what's the direction and goal for this?
Right. At some point, at some point, as you know, we are looking to have a new state strategic education plan. One with more accessible goals, one with updated guiding principles, one with metrics, one that permit contributions from local school districts. So we're just, we are re- So we're just we are re. Refreshing board members minds or re refreshing board members minds about where we've been. And we are getting their reflections on the work to date. There are no decisions being made. But we've been we're two months from our most recent board meeting. And the summer does us no favors with the state board. And and moving issues forward.
And so, you know, guiding principles, and I apologize, have has the board. So I mean, I understand that today we're talking about metrics. Are we assuming that the board is fine with the guiding principles and goals? Or is that something that we've? If we I don't know if we they look familiar. I think we've discussed them. I don't know that we've approved them. And so I don't want to discuss. You know, the the added guiding principle. Okay, I guess a lot of this is just stuff from prior years, but. Like the added guiding principle, I don't know if that's up for debate or if we're just talking about or for discussion or if we just want to. Look at metrics, but I mean, just off the top of my head, student achievement. I'm always concerned how that's defined. Is it defined by a test? Or by a couple tests? And I guess it gets defined through the goals, but. You know, I'm also concerned about creativity gaps. I don't know if that's a if I don't know if that's a phrase, but I'd like to coin it that. A lot of times when we're focusing on testing and maybe I'm not sure about opportunity gaps, but. You know. Kids, you know, we end up dropping a bunch of stuff that kids might actually love and 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 inspire them. And to be more creative and more inspirational and more interested in education in general. So I don't know. But I mean, I yeah, I guess we added that and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with it. I don't know the definition of achievement gap. Again, it's usually tied to tests, which make me nervous, so. I'll I'll throw that out there and I am concerned about the metrics as far as. Testing young children. I this almost, you know, I'd I'd like to know whether this is going to drive things back to kindergarten and first grade or can we? Can we somehow acknowledge or maybe at least a majority of the board is is interested in? In trying to turn this ship that seems to be forcing. Kindergarten and first grade teachers to spend a lot more time. Looking at metrics and looking at testing kids as opposed to letting them. You know, be kindergarteners and focused on just helping them. I don't know, be kids in kindergarten and first grade, so. I know those are some a couple of my initial thoughts.
Okay, fair enough. So let me let me share a reflection or two if I could. The first is that. The. Work that we've presented you with today is a work in progress. And so we began to put that together. In the fall, prior to surveys and focus groups. With sharing of data with you. On early childhood, on CTE participation and completion rates, on early middle college, AP, IB. Dual enrollment and the like. We surveyed twelve thousand people, shared surveys, we did focus groups and the like. And then when we pivoted into the new year. We began to develop this. New strategic plan piece by piece. So what you are seeing at each session of the board, but what you've not seen in two months. Is the most current iteration of where we are. We've not changed mission and vision from the twenty sixteen. Strategic education plan. They are as they have been. The guiding principles are recast, but they remain of much the same spirit. The goals are new. They are. We think more accessible and more operationalizable. Metrics are new because we have no metrics in the current strategic education plan. And the notion of contributions by local school districts. Is a a new effort, an effort designed to make. A strategic education plan, a state strategic education plan. In a local controlled state of eight hundred and thirty one LEAs come alive. And be a living document rather than a relatively static one. I think a number of board members have concerns about. An over reliance on assessments in education. And that's why the only one of the eight metrics. That relies exclusively on assessments is. That of literacy. And that was because it was hard to for us to determine how you would measure literacy growth. Without measuring literacy growth without some use of assessment. But many of the other. Metrics have no reliance whatsoever on assessments or have limited reliance. On assessments, the early childhood education expansion. The the graduation rates, the post secondary credentials, the health, safety. And wellness, the adequate and equitable school funding. The addressing the teacher shortage. For the most part, these either don't have assessments within them or if they do. They're gently used rather than substantially used. To your question about gaps, I agree there are creativity gaps in public education. By the way, in private education probably too. I'm not sure how to measure a creativity gap. But to to paraphrase a famous line, I know it when I see it.
That's the problem. That's the problem is that we we focus on things we can measure. I think Young Zhao talked about this, but. I mean, that's because they're easy to measure. Doesn't mean that's the good things we should be measuring. Because when you measure things, you get more of them or they elevate their importance. So unfortunately. Just because it's difficult to measure. It goes by the wayside and then it won't be elevated. It will be. Devalued simply because it's hard to measure. So it's just a it's a. It's just not a good thing to say we can't put that in because we can't measure it. Well.
Where would you where would you ask? You know, I'm happy to I'm happy to include it. Tell me where you'd have us included. I think it properly but I think it properly belongs somewhere in guiding principles.
Right.
There is a reference to all educators are encouraged to be creative and innovative. That's to the educator side. I think that there's a value to including that reflection. In with respect to students. So I think that there's some value to that as well. The term creativity gap. Maybe glitching on the nomenclature, but the reference to creativity is huge. And I concede that would be happy to consider any sort of reflection for. You know, perhaps under number one, which is the. Probably the most logical place for it to be, but if not one, then under. Under three perhaps as well, but we we will work on that. The the notion of achievement gap, I think to your to your point is usually measured. With assessments, but not always. You have achievement gaps that are manifest or that are are focused upon, if you will. In terms of differential graduation rates. From from high school, differential college attendance rates, differential college completion rates. And 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 so I don't think that has to be about assessments. But I I think, look, I'm the wrong person to argue against creativity. So we'll we will figure out how to give it a a place. If you could also think about that as well, though, I think there would be some value to that.
Thank you.
Welcome, Board Member Tiffany Tilly. We are glad to have you. And if I do not hear.
Please share.
Okay, so I I'm sorry, I just got a. Something in the chat from Nikki Snyder. She asked me to please share that she has to step away. And she writes that. And I'm going to work on scrolling up so that I can give this. It's just due. She writes, please share self actualization for all kids is a significant issue. At this time in our schools or in our system. With or without the risk factors we typically track and the date we focus on. Child themselves presents that risk consistently toggles with it or does not. It will be difficult to discuss. What it looks like to advise them later if we haven't first focused on early literacy. And our sure local school districts are giving them early learning supports. That they simply need again with or without risk factors we typically track. The child should get what the child needs as basic or naive as that sounds. Surely the pandemic is drawing us back to those basics more than ever before. We can't answer that those basics for all kids are considered at this table today. And during this unprecedented time, we are missing the entire beat of public education. I believe the coming months will reveal much of what we are missing. But I'm hopeful we will get through this together. So that's from a board member Nikki Snyder who indicates that she. Wanted me to share that she had to step away for work. She did hope that she was going to be back. Later in the in the meeting. Thank you for that, Board Member Snyder. Anything more on these five goals? Metrics before we pivot to the remaining three goals worth of metrics? Okay, back to you, Ms. Alice and Ms. Carter and Mr. Garant.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. We will now move to the remaining three. Goals that are being proposed and look at the metrics for those three remaining goals, beginning with. To improve the health, safety and wellness of all learners, and I will turn this back to Mrs. Carter.
Thank you. So I'm going to step through these a little bit differently than I'm done the past on the metrics we're recommending. For the goal of improve the health, safety and wellness of all learners. So I'll wait for Mark on my screen. It's not showing up yet. We can move to that one. If others are seeing on their screen, let me know in case it's a delay on mine. But. Okay, so. I'm just going to continue. Hopefully you have the document.
Are others seeing it because it's there?
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
It's being shown.
Okay. Perfect. So I'm going to walk through each of these recommended metrics. And I'm going to share what the data source is for them and also where we made either an amendment or where we added. So the first metric recommendation is the average daily student participation in school breakfast programs. And the data source for that is through reimbursements that are we that come into MDE from the schools. The next is the percent of students who have on track attendance. We get that through my school data. Then the next grouping of questions are all from the youth risk behavior survey. And we get that's national data from the Centers for Disease Control. And they do a national survey to random schools within your state. And then at the local level or at the county level, there is something called MI-FI, which is the Michigan. A profile for healthy youth, and this is where the same questions are asked and it's optional for schools to participate. And they do the same questions as the national survey, but they do it at a lower level. So that's through MI-FI and at the national level, it's through the youth risk behavior survey. So the next ones I'm going to go through of recommendations of metrics are from that survey. Okay, so those include the percent of students who are physically active for a total of at least sixty minutes per day. And five or more of the past seven days. The percent of students who played video or computer games or used a computer three or more hours. Per day for something that was not schoolwork. That was an added metric. The percent of students who use tobacco products and or electronic vapor products during the past thirty days. The percent of students who use marijuana during the past thirty days. And that was changed where you see the word marijuana is highlighted. That used to say drugs, so we are more specific in that metric. The number of students who receive school mental health and support services. The percent of students who have been bullied on school property in the past twelve months. The percent of students who felt so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row during the past twelve months. And then the last one is the percent of students who seriously considered attempting suicide during the past twelve months. Those are all questions that are come from the youth risk behavior survey. The next set of metrics that were recommend be added are from the Annie E. Casey Foundation Kids Count Profile. Giving you just a little bit of background about on that. Foundation and the metrics we're recommending. Since nineteen ninety, the Annie E. Casey Foundation has ranked states annually on overall child well being using index of key indicators. So the kids count data is an index that captures what children need most to thrive using four domains. And those are what you see below. Those include economic well being, education, health, and then family and community. And so then within each of those domains, there's another four indicators. So there's a total of sixty indicators that all roll up then to give that national rank for overall child well being for each state. So that is a new set of metrics that we thought were. Really fit well with this goal and what was the intention of the goal. So now I'm going to shift over to Mr. Garant and he's going to go through the financial piece. For the goal of improving or providing adequate and equitable funding. Thank you.
Should we take that? Good afternoon, board members. For this goal area, provide adequate and equitable funding. The proposed metrics that we're providing or we're proposing are linked directly to the Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative. Study outcomes and as the boards had numerous conversations. Around school funding and the numerous school finance. Studies that have been done in the last five to six years. All coming to the same conclusion that Michigan schools are are underfunded. We wanted to link to what is felt to be the most comprehensive of those surveys, which is the SFRC recommendations. So here. For the metrics you'll see, and I'll just. These are weighted for poverty, yes or no. Does the formula match the School Finance Research Collaborative recommendation? Yes or no? And then what is the difference? And if you remember in the SFRC recommendations. There are a number of of areas where the study recommends weights to better support. Students or schools in specific categories to offset underfunding those services for those students or in that area. Again, specifically transportation. So as as Mark shows down here, you've got the same kind of format for the goal metric. For the poverty, English language learners. Students with disabilities. Career. Education. Funding for GSRP, early childhood funding. And then finally, does the state provide funding specifically for to offset transportation costs? So those are the metric areas that we're proposing. And again, the the format that we're proposing those metrics to to outline in so we can. Connect connect where we are as a state at any given time. In those areas and whether or not there's a weight to better support schools in those areas. And if not, what is the difference between what is currently being appropriated to schools? And how it compares to the SFRC recommendation for that metric area? And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kelly.
Thanks, Mr. Garant. And then, Dr. Rice, if you would please go over the next goal area on addressing the teacher shortage.
So can we put put those metrics up? So can we put those metrics up?
It should be there. It's showing on my screen.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. So five metrics under increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. Number of endorsements in critical shortage areas. Number of positions filled by appropriately certified educators assigned to subject areas listed within the critical shortage list. Retention rate of appropriately certified educators signed to subject areas listed within the critical shortage list. Number of positions on the critical shortage list that are reported as vacant. And percent of teachers by ethnicity compared to percent of students by ethnicity. We believe that each of these metrics helps get at a portion of the teacher shortage issue. Of the five metrics, metrics one, three, and five are what we would call mature metrics. We believe that we can provide these now and that they are pretty clean data, pretty accurate data. We believe that metrics two and four are metrics that are a little bit more complicated and that will require us to work with a number of our partners to strengthen. Nonetheless, we felt that there was a value to having them all represented within our strategic plan and to not lose particular data, particular texture about this very complicated and important phenomenon of teacher of teacher shortage. Happy to to answer questions or to take comments at this time on any of the on any of the metrics. Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, I guess on the improved health, safety and wellness. I mean, I find a lot of the if they're metrics, I'm assuming that there's interest in measuring these, like measuring every child. Or maybe it's maybe it'll be a sample, but I find them pretty outrageous. I don't think it's any of the business of the government to decide how much physical activity or not decide, but to monitor how much physical activity or video playing or for that matter, tobacco or marijuana or, you know, I mean, those those areas, I'm a little. I mean, I guess we're going to be monitoring them throughout their day. And I I just, I don't know if they're metrics. I'm assuming that means we want to measure them. And I just would not really feel like we should be doing that as a government, to be honest.
Yeah, no, I respect that. That's fair. I will tell you that that different people have different perspectives about this. This is not for the purpose of scrutinizing any individual children. Most of the metrics before the Annie E. Casey Foundation Kids Count Profile metrics. So they're really divided into two or three buckets. The pre-Annie E. Casey Foundation Kids Count Profile metrics. And then the Annie Casey Foundation Kids Count metrics. Of the ones that are above Annie E. Casey, virtually all of those are self-reported. And they are self-reported anonymously. I don't self-report as Michael Rice. I simply answer a survey. And Ms. Carter can share a little bit more about those two surveys. They are anonymous. They give us a sense of how we're doing as a state in particular areas. And I acknowledge that there are going to be some of these that people are more comfortable with and others that they are less comfortable with. But it's generally trying to get a sense of how children are doing from a health, safety and wellness perspective while being relatively minimally intrusive in terms of the data collection. Ms. Carter, if you could share with us the source of those two sets of data.
Actually, I don't, I mean, unless you really want to. It's, you know, really, to me, it's somewhat irrelevant how it's being gathered now. If we're putting this in as metrics, next year or two years or four years from now, people could gather, I mean, decide to do it a more invasive way or a more. I mean, I don't see if you had something in here that said it, you know, it will all be done anonymously. It will all be done, you know, exactly what that means. That might be fine, but to just put it in here as a metric. Like I said, it's somewhat irrelevant to me how it's being done now. It's just unless, yeah, so anyway, that that's my my thought is that I I'm uncomfortable with them being metrics, no matter how they're being obtained because just because it's obtained one way now doesn't mean it won't be changed in the future.
Sure. No, I respect that. Ms. Carter, if you could share the sources of the data, please. And then maybe one or a number of other people can reflect upon the utility or lack thereof of this data. Because we are strongly in favor of a health, safety and wellness goal, as I think all board members are. We're less wedded to any particular metric to measure that goal. We have some reflections about what makes better sense or less sense. But we're hanging our hat less on specific metrics than on the the logic that there is a value to trying to improve health, safety and wellness of our young people. So Ms. Carter.
Yes, so when you looking at the metrics that we've recommended above the Annie Casey Foundation metrics, the first two, as I mentioned, are not within the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So when you see average daily student participation in school breakfast and percent of students on track. The other ones below that are all specific questions on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. That's exactly the way that they're asked on the survey, which, as Dr. Rice stated, they're they're self-reported. So it's voluntary and schools are for this survey, schools are randomly selected in Michigan to participate. So within the MI-FI survey, which is the Michigan Profile of Healthy Youth, which use the same questions, but at the local level. And then the schools or the counties can look at their own data. We can't bring that up and aggregate at the state level, but they're the same questions. So the YRBS and the MI-FI survey kind of look at each other. So they can see to make sure that there's consistent ways that the questions are being answered. You know, the like data scrubbing. But all of those questions are exactly as they are in the survey and they are all self-reported. So anything else, Dr. Rice, you want me to add?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
And so I've got a few other things that. So the daily average student participation in school breakfast programs. I hope we can all agree that if that got to zero, it'd be the best. If kids were able to not have to get breakfast at home, gets at school, but actually get it at home. You know, if prosperity increased such that that could be zero, I think that would be a great thing. So I just, you know, I don't know if we're saying that that, you know, we want to get that up or down. But, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to to mention that. I guess on the finances, I don't see anything about like percent of overhead or percent of of funds going into the classroom instruction directly. I I mean, maybe, maybe that's there, but I, you know, I would like to. I would like to see that as far as talking about adequate funding or I hope we're not talking about, you know, I mean, I hope we're talking about adequate funding of instruction and not necessarily adequate funding of more overhead. And that's about it for me.
So so to the to the issue of health, safety and wellness metrics, most of the metrics are directional. So for example, you you would like to have smaller numbers of children in particular categories over a period of time or larger numbers in other categories. So you'd like larger numbers of children physically active, larger numbers of children with on-track attendance, smaller numbers using tobacco products, marijuana, in need of school mental health and support services, for example. So I think, Mr. McMillan, you point out the one metric of many, unsurprisingly, that is a marbled metric that doesn't necessarily have a a distinct direction in it, inherent within it. That there is there is nothing that is better or worse per se about more or fewer lunches. I understand your perspective. It is a perspective. Another perspective is is that we're a long way off from everybody being able to feed themselves at home in the morning. And and so this is in some way a measure of need. It would be ideal if there were no need. Part of the problem with this metric or the challenge with this metric, if you will, is that children who might need the food and who qualify for the food don't avail themselves of the food. So that the metric can, the number captured by the metric can rise, not because we've become more challenged as a society, but simply because more people are comfortable availing themselves of the service. The number can go down and that doesn't mean that we're better off as a society, but rather perhaps simply that fewer people are comfortable, for whatever reason, availing themselves of the school breakfast program. It is the one metric of many under Student Health, Safety and Welfare that is a marbled metric, that the movement in the metric doesn't necessarily determine progress per se. It's descriptive, but it's not descriptive of progress necessarily. So point well, point well taken. With respect to funding, funding is the funding metrics that you see that Mr. Garant so ably looked at. Or with respect to School Finance Research Collaborative weights, you know, a board, that six studies in six years have said the same thing. We underfund public education in Michigan. It's not my opinion, although it is. It's the professional judgment of researchers in six independent studies, including the independent study of our former Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor Calley, who in 2017 headed a study on special education funding and found that we were underfunding special education in the state by just shy of two-thirds of a million dollars. And now it's closer to three quarters, two-thirds of a billion dollars. And now it's closer to three quarters of a billion dollars. So all of these questions are questions around SFRC. Do we have weighted formulas for different types of children? Does the weighted formula that we currently have match the SFRC recommendation? And to the extent not, what's the difference between our current funding formula and the SFRC recommendation? You could literally have hundreds of metrics for school finance. And Sheila Alice knows because we spent some time with Professor David Arson on this subject that we considered a number of different possibilities, many of which were interesting to me and to some degree to Professor Arson, but which were a little bit arcane for a lay audience. So we tried to make this as clear and as concise as possible for for readers of this. Mr. Garant, do you have anything more to share on that particular issue?
I think I think you've covered it well. And I think to Tom's question earlier, you know, those weights are specifically focused on providing resources to students who we know need additional supports to be successful. So I think in that sense, the weights are targeted or are aimed at targeting those funding, those funds to support those students.
Right, and are typically weights associated with funds going into the classroom. English language learners, special education, youngsters or children with disabilities. These are not areas that have enormous overhead associated with them. The costs associated with them are the costs associated with what goes on in the classroom predominantly. Other comments or reflections, questions?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, Michelle. So with regard to the breakfast, if it was stated in terms of students on reduced qualifying for low and free lunches or, you know, that they get breakfast so that it kind of, because if you have an Applewood district that doesn't, it's not as urgent of an issue. Is there some way to just tweak that metric so it focuses on the students who receive free or reduced lunch?
Well, we could make this a free or reduced price lunch metric. In other words, we could we could pull out the reference to breakfast entirely. We were trying to get some sort of a feeding metric in there. But to your point, every child who eats breakfast with us doesn't necessarily eat breakfast with us that's free. And the fact that you eat breakfast or don't eat breakfast doesn't necessarily mean that your economic disadvantage as a state or as a district in miniature is higher or lower. So we could take this down to simply economic disadvantage. The percentage of kids in the state eligible for free or reduced price lunch eligibility. And eligible for free or reduced price lunch.
I do like the idea of making sure kids who are from homes where they might not get breakfast. And I'm thinking, just looking at the percentage of students on free and reduced lunch that are participating in the breakfast might be a way to sort of, you know, focus on the higher need kids and and kind of get to what Tom was saying, you know. So if so, if our numbers of free reduced lunch goes down, it won't matter as long as the percentage that need it, get it, whether it goes up or down. It's looking at a subpopulation.
So so the the population, the kind of reflection is the percentage of our free and reduced price lunch children that eat breakfast with us?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Because then that is making sure that the kids who really need it, get it. And and it seems like it might be more more meaningful in that way. The other thing is I really do like the idea of looking at how much money in a district is going towards the classroom and how much is going towards administration or overhead and that the funds that they get. So I I would be in favor of adding that metric as well. And I think a lot of this, because I have a question like, so if I'm a superintendent in a district, how will these metrics, how like, and I know there's, we've probably gotten phone calls about this, but like, what targets are we looking for? Are there, is there, so there's, you know, improve it or provide it or. But are we looking for a particular target or recommended target that we were saying, you know, or a range that we're saying is appropriate or that we're trying to obtain over a certain period of time in in pieces, you know, so that. period of time in, in pieces, you know, so that if I'm, if I'm looking at what I need to do to align goals in my district to the state goals, what are, what are the things that I can do that will contribute to having, having the state as a whole move forward? So, so I think, you know, having, recommending a certain range for that this is what should be going into a classroom, this, you know, if it's lapses, that's, that's not a good way to spend your, your funding on, on a district level. The other stuff speaks to the legislature and trying to change things in, in that way, but I, I, I'm just trying to see how, what a district leader or an ISD leader would do to further, and I do like, like the idea of including these recommendations around funding, and I do think we should be pushing for the weighted, you know, the differential funding, but I, I also am looking for things that speak to districts or to ISDs.
Sure. So a few things. One, we are not reflecting on particular goals for inclusion in a strategic plan update in an effort to drive local school districts to work on particular goals. We think instead, these reflect the goals that most of our districts are working on in some way, shape or form, in many ways, currently. So we're not telling them to work on early childhood, they are. We're not telling them to work on early literacy, they are. We're not telling them to work on health, safety and wellness of children, they are. That said, though, there are going to be opportunities for them not only to contribute to the collective understanding about how you drive these goals, but also to learn from that collective understanding via the contribution section and the attaching of links to best practices within particular areas, specifically with respect to school funding. We, we could certainly share with local school districts recommendations about school funding, but the context that each school district operates under as an LEA or as an ISD will drive what it is capable of. If you are able to spread your, the cost of your superintendent over 50,000 kids in Detroit versus 1,000 children in Galesburg, Augusta, all else being equal, you are going to have lower overhead costs in Detroit because you have a substantial economy of scale, whereas you're going to have higher per pupil overhead costs in Galesburg, Augusta, not because you're less efficient in terms of what you do on a day-to-day, but rather simply because that superintendent's salary and benefits get spread over only 1,000 children as opposed to 50,000 children. And again, all else being equal, your overhead costs are going to appear greater, and numerically they will be greater, but not because you are less efficient, but rather simply because you have fewer young people. The conversation around dollars in classrooms versus dollars in, in a, outside of classrooms are really dependent upon the number of children you have, the types of children you have, the types of district you have, the types of responsibilities that you have outside of classrooms that you may not have in other districts. So for example, you and I are both superintendents, and you're responsible for a rural jurisdiction, I'm responsible for an urban. You're responsible for a rural jurisdiction that transports children by bus over hundreds and hundreds of miles, square miles, and maybe more than that. I'm responsible for a district where kids walk to school. So your overhead costs are going to be greater, not because you're, you're not as efficient or as good a manager, but rather because you have a population that needs to be transported. I have a population that can walk to school, so I can afford to put more in a classroom. You can't, because if you didn't transport your kids, you would never get them to the, to the classroom. So this is a, it's a tricky area. It doesn't tend to lend itself well to this sort of a scorecard, if you will. It is extremely interesting and is absolutely helpful when it comes to the analysis of individual local school districts and what they do with resources, but to roll it up statewide and to look at directions is extremely hard. Yeah. Other questions or comments, thoughts, fears, phobias? President Olbridge, you have been quiet. Any questions or comments?
No, I, for those who are not aware, I was on the call last week with the other group, so the input that I had, I actually shared earlier, which is why I'm so quiet on this call.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Tilly? Okay, all right, very good. Ms. Snyder, are you back with us?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I did read your comment in the chat for, for public consumption. Anything else you care to share?
Not really. I think things are just changing so frequently that, that we'll just have to go with the conversation as it flows.
Okay, very good.
So I have something else.
Okay, please.
So are we going to be putting, yeah, are we going to be, a couple of things. One is, are we putting actual targets of what we want to do, like, we would like to get this many by this year, like, maybe a halfway point, but half, five years from now, we'd like to hear, or two years from now, we'd like to be at this certain target for, I don't know, teacher retention, whatever it is, certifications, graduation rate, are we AP programs? Are we putting in any specific measures in that way? Is that, is that going to be a next step? My second question, how do we make this meaningful to districts and to ISDs so that they adopt these things as much as they can within, you know, within their own strategic plans or in their own practices in their schools? Are you saying they're doing it already? I'm, I'm sure most are, but I wouldn't, I would hazard to say that all are, and so I'm just wondering how we, how we, how we're going to work with and communicate this to the districts and other groups that could support, you know, I've been told, like, MASB or these other groups might be, you know, communicating to them to get it, whether superintendent groups or whatever, the administrative groups, the teacher groups, to get this, to see what, you know, how this links up to having, like, being a real concerted effort across, as much as possible. So those are the questions. One is, how do we get everybody on the same page?
Right. So, so to the question of same page, once the board approves a strategic plan, we will publicize it, we will drumbeat around it at public forums within ed orgs and outside of education organizations, we will share it with our partners, not simply within education, but beyond education and philanthropy and business and the like. We will share it with all groups of educators and non-educators. We will also share with them the opportunity as local school district leaders, as educators, when we're talking with educators, that they have the ability to contribute to these plans. And so everybody is working on literacy. What are you doing that's particularly effective that you'd like to share with other people? What's your one best practice about which you are particularly proud? What are your two best practices of which you're particularly proud? What are you doing on health, safety and wellness, which is exciting? What are you doing to encourage participation in, for example, CTE programs or AP programs? What are you doing to get kids across the finish line in graduating from high school or moving on to college? So that's with respect to the drumbeat, with respect to getting on the same page and recognizing that local school districts have the right and the responsibility to adopt whatever goals they choose. We chose to put goals in front of you, which were largely respected and appreciated by people who were asked, what do you think our goals as a state ought to be in terms of public education? So we didn't say, what should somebody else do, but rather, what should we do collectively? And when people responded from local school districts, they responded in many ways with what they felt was important as manifest by what they are doing. To the issue of targets, there are no goals that have specific targets beyond progress with one exception, and that exception is the last of, let me back up. I see the goals in two broad areas. There are six that are associated with what educators do with young people in public schools, and there are two associated with so-called upstream circumstances that affect children, namely, the adequate and equitable school funding, number one, and the addressing of teacher shortage, number two. The one goal of the six that are local school district related, and I don't mean related in that they are tangentially related or secondarily related, but that local school districts can affect, the one, the one area that local school districts can affect that does in fact have a target is the last of those six, and it's the percentage of adults in our society with a post-secondary credential. And that is a way to talk about the Governor's 60-by-30 goal, and that has, that goal has an inherent target within it, 60% of all adults with a post-secondary credential by 2030. Apart from that, the other goals are not recommended so much with targets, but with a need to demonstrate regular progress. Now, I do think in the midst of a pandemic, we are going to be challenged to show progress in educational metrics. But that said, I think it's important to understand trend lines pre-pandemic, through the pandemic, and coming out of the pandemic, so we're able best to serve our children. And so it's in that spirit that we offer these, these goals and these metrics. There are people that think that there's some utility associated with putting targets on these. There's so much going on in each of these metrics. I would be, I would have misgivings particularly in the midst of a pandemic to put firm targets on these goals, but I do think that there's a value to looking at progress and to assessing how we're doing at particular points of time in our educational history.
But we could put targets that, that count for COVID, but, and don't have, they can be realistic, given the circumstances, but, so, so we are using this to measure the, how well MDE is doing to meet these targets, not necessarily
No.
The ISD districts? Is that what, is that what this is for? So it's to measure, hold ourselves accountable?
It's to measure progress in the state in the education of 1.5 million public school children. There's a value to understanding that our graduation rates in the state are increasing. There's a value in the state to understand that our early childhood education numbers have increased, that our literacy rates have improved, early childhood or early literacy rates have improved to, to some degree. There's a value to knowing that our CTE and our AP and our IB, our early middle college and our dual enrollment numbers have all increased. And if perchance, in the midst of the pandemic, those increases are attenuated or reduced to some degree, well, then it gives us a, a little bit of an opportunity to reflect upon where we've been, what the trend line was, what happened in the midst of a pandemic, and by extension, how we need to support children better moving forward. I think we're usually better off with some measure of data, no, no pun intended, recognizing that there are things that we can measure that are of little utility, and there are things, I think to Mr. McMillan's earlier point, there are things that we can't measure that are of substantial benefit to us, and more importantly, to children.
Then this is my last comment. So, so we are, we're, our target is, in my, from what I hear, is what we're targeting progress in these areas, not the amount of progress, but just making progress, doing better than we did before. Do we have strategies that we're going to be talking about? I mean, it's your, will that be part, like, how to get teacher retention? Like, are there policies and strategies that will be discussed in order to promote that, or, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's actually a really, that's actually a really great question, and that, that question around teacher shortage, one could arguably is a whole lot more amenable to school district action, or rather, MDE action than are some of the other goals. We're, funny that you should raise this, Ms. Vecto, but we are meeting today at 5:00. This is one of the agenda items on our senior staff meeting. We have a meeting Thursday with partners, and we'll be working on this issue with partners as, as well. We'll be presenting to the board on each of these areas in the coming year. If they are part of a state strategic education plan, we'll be sharing not only where we are to the best of our ability from a measurement perspective, but by extension, what we're doing collectively in the state, either from MDE or elsewhere, will be reflecting upon how we're moving these numbers. So that's the spirit of the, the meeting today, it's the spirit of our meeting later in the week, and it's the spirit in which we offer this form of strategic plan, not that it be two-dimensional, not that it be static, but rather that it be a living, breathing document, and that it encourages us to, to drive particular activities to, to get greater progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other, other reflections, pulsing with board members? Ms. Brandy Johnson, if you are still with us, do you have any reflections perhaps about the one, perhaps about the one goal that's associated with the Governor's 60-by-30? She may have.
Hey, Dr. Rice, this is Sam. She is off the call, she's on, in another meeting right now.
Okay, I appreciate that, Sam. You, you are doing a good twofer there, thank you. Other board member comments? Okay, Ms. Alice, Ms. Carter, and Mr. Garant, any additional reflections?
None from me, thank you, Dr. Rice.
No, thank you, Dr. Rice.
Okay.
I'm all set, thank you, sir.
Very good, okay. Seeing none, hearing no additional comments from board members. Seeing none, hearing no additional comments from board members, we will pivot. Marilyn indicates that there are no individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting. Board members, do you have any comments for us?
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work on this. Thanks for your hard work and thanks for answering all these questions and considering, you know, what the comments that, that we've had.
Yeah, thank you. Other, other comments, board members? More comments, anything more? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Let's just note for our listening audience that we have three future meetings coming up. One on Tuesday, August 11th, a second on Tuesday, September 8th, a third on Tuesday, October 13th. These are all regular meetings. They are all at 9:30. And at least for the foreseeable future, they are all going to be held remotely. If anything changes with that last piece of information, we will notify the public accordingly. Seeing and hearing no additional requests for comment, it is 3:36. Please enjoy your afternoon. Thank you very much, board members and community for your participation. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you too.